It's a little after 7 o'clock and so I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board to order and please note attendance Denise. Welcome everyone for coming. Let's open with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a quick moment to notice our two new district office employees over here, Assistant Superintendent Dandy Stevens and Curriculum Director Lynda Myers. They're going to be joining us twice a month now. Okay, first off, it's the time to nominate and elect a Board Chair. So are there any nominations?
I nominate Tim Roth for Board Chair. Second.
Any other nominations? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? No? Okay, thank you. And Vice Chair? Nominations for a Vice Chair? Anybody?
I nominate Wally.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of Wally for Vice Chair?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good deal, thank you guys. We have an extensive consent agenda tonight, lots of hires, some resignations. Is there a motion for approval?
Who for approval? Has presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Audience with visitors, Miranda Trager and Jennifer DeJonge from Community Roots. They've got to talk with us for a little bit tonight.
Hi.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good.
So, thank you for the opportunity to address the Board. I am truly appreciative of the continued support for our charter. We strive to be a quality option for this district and for our families. This Montessori method was established in Europe and over the last century has spread worldwide. At the root of the model is a child-centered focus and proficiency-based learning. Montessori is expanding to become a very viable option in the public sector. The state of Oregon has only five public Montessori schools. All except ours are located in urban settings. So what an amazing option for a small town. So thank you for your continued support in bringing this educational opportunity to our small community of Silverton. So thank you. As a part of this journey in Silverton, we have been searching for a permanent facility. Last fall, our Facility Committee kind of finalized a two-year exploration of trying to find a permanent home. It concluded that there is not a piece of property that Community Roots could financially be able to afford to build or to remodel. The system development charges alone set the price tag well out of the financial reach of our small community. We are grateful to be a part of the conversation as Silver Falls School Board takes on the task of finding a solution to the facility needs of the students in this district. As we continue this conversation, it's important to CRS that we try to find facility that's in town, one that allows us the opportunity to create our own individual school climate and one that allows for growth of an outdoor education classroom in the form of gardens and an outdoor play area. Again, I'm so very grateful for this opportunity to be a part of this conversation and we're willing to help in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just add and echo to Miranda's sentiments about this relationship that we have in the district and how valuable Michael we are for the continued relationship. As Miranda said, we've given a lot of thought to facility needs and spent quite a bit of time thinking about what our community values, what type of space we would like to see as a long-term vision. And so you have a document in your packet, I believe, that puts out some of our priorities. I think that being in town has been clearly a priority for our community and so we really appreciate the fans allowing that.
Can you expound on that, why it's been a good thing for you to be in town versus...
Well, we were at Monitor for two years and there was, I think, a feeling of disconnect. You know, in the morning you drop tits off, you see parents standing outside talking. When they pick up, they talk, people gather together during those times. They do a lot of going outs and Miranda can speak more to those, but they walk into town, they go to the library, being a part of the library. Some sort of community service is where we've been wanting to go with our upper elementary for some time so that they're involved in some sort of giving back to the community. Something you want to add about being in town?
So part of our mission statement is that we're rooted in our local community. There's a high priority that we set in having our kids be a part of this community. And the going outs that Jen was talking about, what that is, is we actually have students who get very excited about something in our community that they want to learn about. They plan it, they call, they set up appointments, they actually print out the maps and they discover their own way and they actually will be the ones that will lead. They'll be an adult with to make sure that they're not, you know, off, but it's really them. They are trying to kind of discover what our community can offer. And so when we're out in the country, you know, that it's very limiting in what they can do. You can definitely do bus routes, but it's different.
Alright, thank you.
And then also the piece about really being a unique school for the district. And when we met with Owen and Andy, we talked about there, when you put two schools together, that there are some types of blending of those school cultures and so Miranda mentioned that, you know, having some of our space be really unique to our culture is important as we consider this partnership. So on behalf of the Board though, I do want to say that we very much are supportive of these current efforts and want to do all that we can to do our part essentially. So we hope that you let us know what it is that we can contribute or how we can come to the table, getting information out there. I know that communication with the community is huge, so letting us know how we can help is really important. We have a few community gatherings, especially at the beginning of the year, so those are good times, I think, to talk to folks. So I guess with that, just let us know. We know there's a lot of work and consideration to be done in the next few months, so anything we can do to help and thanks again for the continued support. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, we're glad to have you guys. You do a good job and I know, you know, people move here to come to your school, so it's a good thing. So I'm looking forward to, I'm glad we can work together and come up with some type of a solution for the facility issue.
Pretty much so.
Other questions or comments for...
I would just say I thought it was a very helpful meeting for me to understand your school and to understand the leadership of your school. I'm just really impressed with what you're doing and I think about making an investment in the future and you guys are clearly solid, you know, you've achieved that threshold there. Like so many businesses or other organizations, you don't know if they're going to stay or go, but you guys really are solid and growing and have great leadership and vision, so really impressive.
Thank you.
Yeah, lots of good things. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to address the Board tonight? We also have another chance later if something comes to your mind. Okay, moving along then. Excuse me. Discussion items. At our last work session on June 23rd, we did our annual superintendent evaluation and we evaluated Andy on 10 different standards and I summarized, we rated him, you know, 0 through 4 on those standards and I summarized those, so those will be in the minutes once Denise gets everything compiled. And, but I'd also like to read a summary of the evaluation that we did and just some of the comments that the Board, that the Board came up with during that work session. Attached is a summary of the superintendent evaluation forms which were completed by a majority of Board members. As agreed, the Board evaluated you on standards 1 through 10. The Board collectively gave you very favorable marks on each standard. As always, this year brought many challenges to work through as a district. Facility issues, new staff evaluation processes, navigating Common Core standards and educating an increasingly diverse student population were just a few of those challenges. You demonstrated very effective leadership through all this and kept the vision and goals for this district at the forefront. Following is a summary of comments made during our evaluation review with you on June 23rd. You are to be strongly commended for your leading by example style. You are open, honest, and trustworthy and model appropriate values, morals, and ethics to staff and community members alike. The visioning process you initiated and helped to guide the Board through has been a highlight of the year and a very positive experience. It brought district-wide results related to governance, leadership, communication, and unification. It gave community members and staff district-wide a chance to have a voice in what the future of this district should look like as well as a chance to voice what is important to them. Overall, a very worthwhile endeavor that will yield good outcomes for Silver Falls School District. Your work at increasing communication with the public has been excellent this year. Many new vehicles have been identified and used to keep people informed and to receive feedback from a wide variety of individuals on many district issues. Public meetings, surveys, mailings, email lists, and many others have all resulted in more information going out to patrons and over 2,800 responses from people giving feedback on facility issues alone. This has been very positive and is something that has been noticed by us as a Board and the public alike. This Board appreciates very much your diligence in getting us information we need to make informed decisions. You give information to us in a timely manner and also bring in expert opinions when needed to help us with those decisions. Navigating the complicated world of curriculum and Common Core standards is an unending challenge. The staffing adjustments you have made mainly in making a full-time curriculum director position are very positive and appreciated. The relationships with our employee unions that you have developed are a strength of this district. Bargaining processes go smoothly and generally have good outcomes for both sides. Higher standards, state requirements, and an ever-increasing diverse student population make teaching and individual learning more challenging. These challenges are being met in our district through your leadership. And then there was a few recommendations the Board had. While communication has been excellent this year, it's important to keep this going and keep finding new ways to reach out to as many people as possible. Also, it might be time to take a fresh look at professional learning communities and make sure they are accomplishing what we want them to and are beneficial to staff members. And finally, keep up the work on curriculum, Common Core standards, and data-driven results as related to instruction and student learning. Andy, the Board thanks you for your dedication and hard work in making our district one of the best in the state of Oregon and for your commitment to our community, students, and staff. We appreciate your approachability, your willingness to listen, and your leadership in providing our students with the best possible education. Your work in our district is truly recognized and appreciated. Thank you for always striving to do what's best for kids. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody have any comments on evaluation?
Nice job.
Okay, second discussion item, preliminary facility project scope for November bond election. Dave CPM, Mike Day, and Bob Collins. Been looking forward to hearing from you guys.
Tim, if I can chime in just for a second. For the benefit of the public, the presentation that Bob and Mike have is related, and I know they'll introduce it as well, but related to estimates specific to a November bond election and what options specific to the Schleter Campus especially, which is a large driver in a lot of this information that we're hearing this evening.
Good evening, Board. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and offer some assistance to you and your decisions coming forth to looking for a bond for November. I'm Bob Collins, this is Mike Day, and if you have any questions as I move through this, feel free to ask any time, sort of waiting to the end. So I think you should have in front of you some summary budgets for the four different options that we talked about as being for you guys to consider. And also I have a narrative there that kind of describes some of the highlights that I think would be attended to, you know, the activities should the Schleter Street Campus be converted to either a middle school or elementary school. So what I like to do is kind of go through what I think is the highlights and if there's any questions about the budget, you know, we can certainly talk about it towards the end of that or you can jump in any time you want. So what my task was, was to take a look at what would take to repurpose a Schleter Street Campus to convert it to a 500-student middle school and then also whether it be a 600-student elementary school. So, and part of that activity was to take a look at doing that, those two scopes of work, whether it's standard construction or a use of volumetric construction as part of it. So that comes up with the four different options or scenarios that are captured in the budget documents. So if the district were to move forward with the 500-student middle school, basically what would occur is once the construction is complete at the new middle school, then Eugene Field students would have to, you know, move out and they would be moving to Robert Frost facility. Okay, that's where they would land. And then we did some investigative work up at Robert Frost to see what would actually have to occur there to accommodate basically the increase of 150 students or so that would occupy that building. And what we looked at was the fact that we'd have to add six classrooms roughly underneath that covered plate structure to accommodate, you know, basically 25 students, times six you get 150 students roughly. The idea there was to use volumetric construction to be able to kind of take modules right underneath that roof. We wouldn't actually have to have a roof structure on that. There would obviously be some work on the site work and stuff, but that was sort of the assumption that we made for this activity. The other things that would occur would be that we would construct a cafeteria that would house 300 students at a lunch sitting, because currently there is not a cafeteria and I know that's definitely an issue, that we want to provide that for the students of that school. Part of the work also would be to construct a new covered plate structure since we're taking that away from the current use of that school. So that would be positioned, you know, roughly we think right where the modular classroom is currently standing, that we would be taking that away because that's something that the district has been wanting to remove, I believe. So that, and the other part of that at Robert Frost would be to do some conversion to provide ADA bathroom access, because currently there isn't something there now that's really ADA accessible. And where that actually is accomplished, you know, there are a couple of different options, whether it's in the bathrooms towards the front of the building or some of those modules that are near the rear of the building. We looked at different options. One of the things that we studied to make sure, we had conversations with the city of Silverton to make sure that, you know, what is the capacity that was needed, how many bathrooms be needed? And if we brought in 150 more students, are there enough bathrooms? And yes, in fact, there are. There is enough bathrooms currently there. With some remodeling, we wouldn't have to add any more facilities there, which was good news. So that pretty much takes into account what would happen at Robert Frost.
Before you leave Robert Frost, we'd also talk, if we didn't do anything there, there were some seismic issues with the current covered area where that mod would go?
Yeah, there would be, there would be roughly $85,000 identified to be able to bring that up to seismic standards just because it's freestanding. The current thought, again, this, you know, we don't have a firm design, but how we kind of looked at it was that we would bring in modular classrooms that would not necessarily support that roof structure, but would sit underneath a bit, you know, we'd tie it in and make it look right, but we wouldn't have a structural design underneath of that.
So the $85,000 would take care of seismic issue whether we put classrooms there or not?
Right. That was the information that was gotten from ZCS to give you a fore...
Okay, so we'd spend it either way, in an ideal world?
Yes.
Okay.
Then the next step, part of that middle school conversion would be the students from Robert Frost and most of those would move to Mark Twain. And what was identified there would be to replace the flooring in the remainder of the classroom. There have been several classrooms that have already had some carpet and tile abated recently that Joel has taken, completed that work. And so the idea is we do the rest of the classrooms, the hallway, and some of the common area, and that would be interior work and then also construct a covered plate structure. That was one of the other things that was designed to be there. If the district moves forward with converting the Schleter Street Campus to a middle school, there are currently spaces there that are underneath the old gymnasium with it down the lower level. They're currently being used by athletic programs. The football team has space down there, locker rooms, and there's roughly about 2,500 square feet of athletic space that is being used at different times throughout the year. And so they include team room, football locker room, athletic trainer room, and some coaches and teachers' offices down there. The newer parts of the locker room, which are in the newer gym addition, it was built back in the 60s, is roughly 3,300 square feet and that includes boys' and girls' locker room, PE offices, showers, gym access from the locker rooms, and two restroom, boys' and girls' restrooms that are right off the gym that were remodeled a few years ago in very nice condition. There are other additional spaces in the gym proper that, separate from the gym and the mezzanine, that comprise about 3,000 square feet. That's the former weight training room, concessions, the athletic director office, and there's one classroom over there. And thoughts that we had, you know, as a possible way to mitigate the loss of the space underneath the oldest 1938 part, would be to take some of those program spaces and repurpose them into these other locations which are currently being used, like I said, there's weight training rooms currently, the robotics room. I think there's the ability to, you know, bring some of those program uses out into some of those other spaces. So that was a discussion that Joel and Andy and I had about that as a possible use. Of course, all this is open for design, you know, once the bond passes, but this is sort of some of the conversations that we had about what's possible over there. And that's what, how we, you know, kind of configured the budget. One of the other things that I wanted to kind of point out in looking forward to how to best use the district assets when coming up with the budgets here, there is some HVAC equipment up on the roof of the oldest part of the building that, there's two of them, two units, there's a chiller and a associated central air handler that appear to be good condition. Joel did some research on that and they think, we think that we can incorporate that in some manner in the remodeled building over there. They were in good condition, running condition when the building was decommissioned, so that, you know, how that would tie in, not certain, but we think we can probably make use of that. There is a fair bit of student and staff furniture stored in the Schleter Street Campus. Certainly we'll bring that and use them as appropriate to come in. So that's been accounted for in some of the student furniture that's in the budget here. We kind of allotted that there was quite a bit of asset the district already has sitting there. Many of you probably know there's a large pile of district pavers sitting over there in the parking lot, which we hope to be able to incorporate into the, you know, remodeled location of the Schleter Street Campus. So now if the district were to move forward with a 600-student elementary school, that means there wouldn't be any plan work at Robert Frost because basically the students at Eugene Field would just come right over to the remodeled elementary school on Schleter Street, nor would there be any work at Mark Twain that's tied with the students moving over. One thing to mention, when I mention there's no work there, one of the things we did put in this budget, and it's certainly open for the Board to consider, is some security upgrades at each of the facilities that was identified by NIS in a report that was done about a year ago. So, but that's, that's open for, you know, the Board to consider. At the Schleter Campus, whether it is converted into a middle school or an elementary school, there is some major site work components that are, have to be taken into account when moving forward. There is traffic improvements that have been identified, but not fully vetted as far as cost based on, have some improvements there at James Street, the intersection in Pine. That came about largely because of, and high school was remodeled, that's what was put on deferred status to be able to have to do that work once the Schleter Campus was brought back into activity. There would be site improvements all along James Street from Schleter all the way up to, I'm not sure the name of that street there, but pretty much past tennis courts would have to be utility work, new pipes in the street, a sidewalk. That has all been identified by work that was done by a civil engineer about a year or so ago. When the, the school was in operation, there were lots of problems with water supply, leaking water, and the vault out there would take quite a bit of work to bring up to standards. With conversations with the city, we did learn, I think, that SDC charges on that building should not be too significant because it's already been, you know, we're not changing what was there, we just haven't improved the equipment. Either way, either scenario, the multipurpose room would be upgraded and served as, you know, we've kind of configured it to be a cafeteria. And then of course, the James Street and Schleter Street classrooms would be remodeled. Community Roots would take, take space in one of those locations, that's to determine which, which side of the building they would be on. And so I think that's kind of the highlights of what I see is the, you know, moving forward with those two, those two scenarios. And I'm going to refer to the, the four different budget scenarios here and take a look at them, and if you have any questions about specific items, please feel free to ask me.
I've got one right here. Start it off. What was the reasoning for using the different contingency percentages in the middle school conversion versus the elementary school conversion?
I believe you're looking at it as the volumetric.
Oh, maybe I'm looking at the wrong comparison here. So we've got different ones on...
No, they're all different.
They're all different.
They are. Well, the contingencies, you mean?
Yeah, in terms of the percentages that were used. Four and a half, I'm seeing four and a half percent as a contractor contingency, 5% as a contractor contingency, 8% as an owner, 10% as an owner, and 9% as an owner.
I believe the differences are reflective of traditional construction versus the volumetric construction. And as we looked at this earlier today, we felt that with pre-manufacturing process that comes with the volumetric construction, that those risks and contingencies, whether they're on a contractor side or the overall owner project risk contingency could be reduced because you're managing some of that through a controlled environment.
That looks to be true for volumetric, but standard construction you have a little bit difference, not a lot.
Just 1% on the owner is all?
Yeah, it was, it was slightly higher on the standard construction. That's correct.
I'm just saying on the middle school versus elementary, same type of construction, you've got the owner's contingency is a percent higher, so it's a little, seemed to be the issue. We should be aligned.
Right. One of the things that, yeah, the 9% on the middle school standard construction, I have 10% here on the elementary school standard construction. I believe that the way that was set up, there was going to be a little bit more of a challenge when it came to tying in the buildings. I think the design would be a little bit different. I think there's also going to be some other issues with playground accommodations for the elementary school that might be a little bit different than the middle school.
Sure, that does make sense.
Yeah. And as Mike was saying, you know, one of the, one of the things that's usually borne very transparently by any company that does volumetric manufacturing is that they take a lot of the risk out of all the design because they do it all in-house. And unless there's some real disconnection with what the overall architect of the district wants, you know, they're, they're doing all in-house as opposed to standard construction. You always have changes and RFIs come up, things that aren't quite the way you thought it was going to be, and so there's definitely some, a little more contingency you have to allow for.
How firm a number do you see this is, is it plus or minus 30%? We really don't have firm scope...
And unless there's some real disconnection with what the overall architect of the district wants, you know, they're, they're doing all in-house as opposed to standard construction. You always have changes and RFIs come up, things that aren't quite the way you thought it was going to be. And so there's definitely some, a little more contingency you have to allow for.
How firm a number do you see this is, is it plus or minus 30%? We really don't have firm scope at all, so it's kind of, it's quite a wag, so.
It is, and I, and I was, I tried to be on the high side a little bit. You know, it certainly could go above, you know, for example, the volumetric construction in the middle school certainly could go above that 24 to 9. And I think the, one of the biggest variables is what is, would be done in the existing building. You know, I think we can identify the new construction cost pretty well, but the classrooms in James Street, the classrooms in Slater, it really does depend on what kind of the board wants to do in there. Some of those rooms are in pretty good condition, some need more work, and we have to define that. We've had some work done on remediation efforts in the heating system on the Slater Street, for example, but that was sort of, you know, in case of an emergency, but we may want to do something different. So we don't have exact numbers, but we did put together, I think, a pretty good, even playing number there that would be pretty good, you know.
And you see this as conservative numbers then, it seems like?
I think so. I do. And we spent, you know, quite a bit of time looking, for example, at the FFNE fixtures, furniture, equipment, understanding what the district currently has, what they might have to provide. You know, again, we haven't gone down and looked at every single piece that's down there or looked at every piece of furniture over at Eugene Field that may want to be, you know, brought over and reused. So we kind of took some, we figured out 50% is what we figured on use of what could be done for the FFNE. And then many of these costs, it's soft costs or percentages that are pretty much industry standard that can vary up and down depending on the kind of building it is, whether it's, you know, it's a municipal building or it's a police station or it's a school. And so, you know, that's kind of what I use with some industry standard percentages on all those soft costs. So they're not necessarily based on individual research on what might happen in some of those activities. For example, you know, the building permits, I kind of got a one and a half percent from the city on what it might cost, but some of the other things really are just industry standard. So the plus or minus 30%, I would say that's, you know, definitely a good number.
Bob, the difference on the middle school standard construction versus volumetric, there's like a $4 million difference. And for the elementary standard volumetric, it's like one and a half. Why is there such a difference in that, in this, the savings for the standard versus volumetric for the two plans?
Well, one of the differences is that in the middle school, there is going to be, I believe, a little bit more cost. The classrooms sizes are different, the classroom program use is different, you know, you're going to have labs that we're going to put in there that we're not going to be using in, for example, the elementary school. And then the, let me hear something.
I meant the savings on standard versus, from standard versus volumetric.
Elementary difference isn't much.
The elementary difference isn't much, and I just wondered why the, why the savings on the middle school was 4 million compared to the elementary being like one and a half.
Well, and one thing that I do want to point out is that the way in which this was constructed, a lot was percentage based. So being that the middle school standard construction was the higher amount, every percentage kind of bumped that all up. So for example, the amount that was put in there for inflation was higher there than all the rest of the options because it was 8% all of theirs. So each figure, soft cost, contractor contingency, owner's contingency, all of that kind of, you know, went up a greater rate than, for example, the elementary school volumetric construction, which was the lower construction, direct construction cost.
These numbers are higher than I had hoped for, but questioned folks over the last week or so about their perceptions and what they think. Reality is, what I gained back from around, around the cost of the project, what I got back was that these numbers really don't mean a lot to many people. But what matters is the cost to the taxpayer. So we need to take these numbers and then figure them down to what's a taxpayer, what's a hit can be on the individual taxpayer.
That's exactly what I was wondering. What's a million dollars on the bond related to in a per thousand dollar rate?
And, I'm sorry, and that information is available. And now that we have this information, I'll approach Seattle Northwest and Laura McMillan, and we'll be able to get that information very quickly.
Is it going to be that straightforward though, because we have to figure out how we're going to package it?
It's all about concept and structure at that point, while you're right. I mean, if, if it's a standard 18 to 20-year debt service, we can get those figures, but then those figures would be adjusted based upon what your interests were in structure.
So make some assumptions and pick it in.
What, what kind of numbers were included in the gymnasium remodel, if, if any? I seem to remember hearing, this is probably my memory failing, but at one time I heard we would do, have to do almost nothing, and then another time I thought I saw a pretty significant number thrown towards remodeling the gym and.
What we, what the assumption that I want on, and I did some conversation with a structural engineer, if we don't, the roof is in good condition. The roof is, I think, 20 years old up there. It's a 25 to 30-year roof, the door lase roof. And so if we don't touch the roof, in theory, we don't have to do any seismic upgrades in that building. That's the information I've gotten. But what we do need to do in there is upgrade the HVAC and the fire suppression system. That's something that we're definitely going to have to do. Because right now what's in there, there is some airflow, but it's really not adequate. And the whole building's going to have to be sprinkled. So, so what I figured on the gym was $31 a square foot, just for the gym itself. And then I had $45 a square foot for the locker rooms, okay? Which is going to take into account, you know, some interior remodeling, plus also moving some of those programs around to be able to give some more space for the spaces that are lost by, you know, demolishing the 1938 part of the building. So those are, those are the numbers that we used for the gym and the locker rooms.
Are those based on actual project cost in other places? That seems low to me.
Well, the HVAC and the sprinkler costs, yes, they are based on actual square foot costs on similar work.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you're correct in your, your comment, and that there's not a, the refurbishment piece is not a significant cost in terms of, you know, a gym-like cost. You know, you could spend a hundred dollars a square foot if you replace flooring and acoustical treatment, and it just depends upon, you know, how far, how far you go.
One of the earlier versions that was done by the architect a year and a half ago did actually do quite a bit of work in the gymnasium, but, you know, it's really in pretty good condition and would function just the way it is, short of, you know, doing work in the locker rooms.
Are these, Bob, are these up to, are the, the gym and the other parts of the building that we're going to reuse, would they, are they going to be up to current earthquake standard when we're done in these proposals?
Well, the gym, it would currently not be, if you built it now, the way it is now, would not be earthquake standards. But if you do not touch it, you do not have to do anything to it. So, you know.
Yeah, I was just trying to.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't, you want to be done and say, this thing is good to go for hopefully another 40, 60 years, something like this.
So, yeah, and the, there are numbers that can be added in here to do seismic retrofit in there, which would be pretty much taken off the roof. And I, my understanding, the work that was done before, probably replacing all the framing members up there too. The way they're sitting up there now, you know, it would have to be a pretty much a redesign. It's not just replacing plywood.
Okay.
Those are important issues. We can certainly, you know, look at that, study it, dissect it, and look at.
We got limited funds, so yeah. It's kind of, it's just the current, it's the current topic, earthquake standards in all of our buildings. And so, you know, it's just kind of, you know, we got portions of the building that still aren't up to standard. It's just kind of, you know.
Does anybody remember what, didn't the ZCS report early on have some information about the gym?
No, ZCS did, did not evaluate the Slater Campus. We have a couple of engineering evaluations from, one most recently in mid 2000s and then another one in the mid 90s.
What about timing on the two projects? Because I think the Eugene Field facilities task force, they met, had a goal of, you know, being out of that building like within a couple of years. Could we accomplish that with either of these plans? Or, I mean, I, because I've heard at one time if we converted to a junior high because of the work at Robert Frost, it would be a longer process. But can those be done at the same time so we could keep the timing?
My thoughts were, you know, the Slater Campus, we can certainly start work on it pretty, we can certainly do a lot of work because it's not being, you know, habitated right now, so we can start working there. You know, the thought that I have is that you could, you know, move in September 2016 with volumetric is certainly going to be an easier schedule to be able to do that. The work of, you know, if it were a middle school, then the work of changing and doing work at Robert Frost and Mark Twain would be a summer, you know, 2016, it would have to happen. You know, there's quite a bit of work there, but it could certainly be done. You know, we'd get everything all lined up to go. So.
Would you have to do it over a couple summers, like Robert Frost? Or would you do it during the year and just put up barriers for the kids and things?
The work at Robert Frost, you know, I, I think that we would be able to start the cafeteria if we did that. You know, you could start that before school let out. You just have to have safety standards there because it's not, not disrupting a current space that the students are in. But adding the six classrooms that we did at volumetric, you'd be able to have it constructed and when school closes, you could bring that in. And the cover play structure is not, you know, a real long lead item to be able to do that. So I don't think, I think you could do it all starting, you know, maybe it's spring break of 2016 and be able to have that done for school startup.
Yeah, I really don't think we want to break up the project because that's going to increase, increase costs and.
Yeah, I just want.
We want to keep that timeline as short as possible.
Yeah. You know, in theory, work in Slater can start, you know, late winter of 2015, you know? We can definitely get some demo plans going and start doing some work there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Slater's not the issue. I was just wondering about the timing after we converted to Robert Frost, moved Eugene Field up there. But that would be possible to still keep that 2016 start date, September.
I believe so.
You definitely get the economies of scale by, you know, not having to do phasing over a longer period of time. And so the overhead and general conditions, the soft costs, all of that is benefits from doing that concurrent work, which, you know, these kind of summer blocks are strategic periods, obviously, with the facilities not being occupied. And we've done many, many of what we call the 90-day miracles, where you, you come in and you go through that transformation. I think what, you know, what's laid out here in terms of the different campuses and doing that summer work is, is very achievable.
Even the Robert Frost stuff, I think we could probably isolate the student activities from the construction activities fairly easily because it's all on the outskirts of the building.
Right, yeah.
And the figures for volumetric, I know when, I'm at one of our last meetings when the, the guy was here talking about the volumetric construction, he showed us lots of different pictures and some were very elaborate, some were pretty plain Jane. What, what do these figures represent in that, in that scope? Is how volumetric would look from the outside?
The figures that I got for volumetric were from his, his budgets. And I believe that it's going to be a pretty middle-of-the-road design, you know, as far as daylighting and, and the roof structure and some of the interior finishes. So it represents, I, I didn't see all of the options that he had, but I think it's, it's not going to be real basic. It's going to be, it's going to be a nice building.
Uh huh, okay.
You know?
Okay.
And certainly the board and, and the district has an option, an opportunity to dictate exactly what you want. You know, so.
Okay.
One thing that struck me about the volumetric is a lot of the, a lot of the buildings look like that kind of mid-century modern design, which is what we have on our wings anyway.
Yeah.
Being built in the 60s and that's obviously really back end right now as a, as a popular thing, but quite incidental.
Andy, if the bond passes, how quick can we get a hold of the money?
Based upon experience, and I don't have a lot of experience in this, but my conversations with Lauren McMillan, a little bit with, with Scott, those bonds can be sold four months potentially-ish. And once they're sold, maybe five months, you've got the money in the bank. You're in a fortunate position now that you do have access to some reserves that could be used to initiate some of the project demolition work, et cetera, early, shortly after an election if it were approved. And that calendar could be crafted ahead of time and, and you, you could begin some of the work right away so that by the time the bond revenue is made available to the school district, you, you'd be able to just do some accounting and replenish your reserves and, and then move ahead. Now, it's, you, you're in a very good position right now to, to begin this project as soon as realistically possible after the bond election.
Do, do the funds come in as they sell the bonds or do they come in in one big chunk at the end?
Uh, no, no, they come in as they sell the bonds. You get the money early up. And, and the bonds are, are all sold generally at the same time.
Oh, okay.
And if I, if I can, when I recall, the, the refunding that occurred a year and a half or two years ago, those bonds were sold literally over the course of an hour. I mean, they were very quick. And there was no shortage of very interested people in municipal bonds.
Well, I just think that demo on that Slater Street is, time is of the essence. I mean, there's no reason to wait on that. I mean, if we get this thing passed, we need to be knocking.
That's realistic.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet.
Like Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning.
There's, there's a little bit of design work that needs to be done on that because we need to isolate the, that structure from the rest, from the rest of the structure. So we can't go in immediately, but with a plan.
We can start at the middle.
Just a couple of items of note, just related to that though, and I, I know each of you can relate to this, is that the, the integrity of the Slater Campus affects two other pretty significant programs, one of them being community route school and the other one being your district office. Water supply to the district office comes through the Slater Campus. Electrical and low voltage comes through the Slater Campus. The entire operation of community routes is through the Slater Campus. So it, it's very much possible, Bob and I have spoken a bit about this, it's just that we'd have to do some isolation and, and create work. But yeah, it can, it can happen. Or we just fire up a generator and we'll do whatever.
Well, when those demo companies move in, they want it totally isolated from everything else, they can go in and just go for it.
Yeah, I was kind of kidding about Wednesday morning.
I was thinking Tuesday.
No, I actually wasn't. I have a big tractor. Any, any other questions for Bob and Mike right now? And we can kind of continue this discussion as we go along. Okay, thank you, you guys.
Appreciate your work.
Thank you, thank you very much. This was real informative. Okay, Andy, in our packet, Andy put in a couple-page form about just some assumptions and some pros and cons of the two, some things we've talked about in the past. And so if we want to, let's just continue this discussion a little bit on what we feel might be the best way to go. Or we can also tie this into talking about whether we want to meet next, next Monday night, July 21st for, for a special work session to hash this stuff over a little bit more. Any thoughts on the figures we have now and pros and cons of middle school versus elementary? And anybody have any thoughts, ideas?
I'll go first. I don't think the, the difference is, is any significant to warrant an elementary school. I mean, there's not enough difference between the two. I mean, you figure it over 50 years, that's nothing.
Yeah, I agree with that. It'd be one thing if we were looking at a $10 million difference or anything like that.
I tend to agree as well. I'd like to see what the, what the impact that the individual taxpayer is between the two.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. I mean, it's, it's better suited as a, as a middle school.
Long-term, that's what it is.
Yeah.
And it makes more sense to do it, to do it as a middle school now, if that's our long-term plan rather than do it elementary and then convert over with it. Unless the dollars per thousand are way higher, but. Unless the dollars per thousand are way higher, but that'll be interesting.
More significant.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's a little higher figures than what I was hoping to see, but generally, everything is.
From what I saw touring the volumetric construction of Blazer over there, yeah, I'm in favor of, of using volumetric construction. I think that quality is, is good, quite better than onsite. Design options or flexibility is there and show that we're saving money. I think that's a good thing to do.
Well, and speed as well. I was a little concerned about the quality difference and I talked to some of the carpenters at, union carpenters that I work with and asked if they had some of the bad experiences of volumetric construction. And a couple of them had and they said, actually, they think the quality's better because of the materials they use and then it's made for shipping. So that made, made me feel a lot better about that approach.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was, I was on that tour with Owen and I was impressed with the quality of volumetric. I wouldn't be scared at all. Definitely quality.
And I was concerned about the timing issue too, but if we can get it all done, I mean, using volumetric, if we can get it all done to keep that, that, like the two-year timeframe that we're thinking about, it would be a plus.
Do you guys happen to know, I guess we're mainly talking about Blazer Industries here. As far as their workload and when, if there's limitations about the volume they can, they can take on and just some good windows to hit on their side?
I, I know that they could handle quite a few projects at one time. I don't know what they're scheduled like, you know, nine months or a year from now. I don't actually know that. But I can certainly check that out and find out what they have in the pipeline, you know, coming up. Because I'm sure they probably have some stuff scheduled out until next spring.
Right.
So I can certainly follow that.
That'd be helpful to know.
Yeah, and Bob, that was another question I had too earlier on, is what are the other companies that are available for this type of construction?
For the actual manufacturing?
Yes.
There's another one up in this near Seattle area, the name escapes me right now, but in this market, Blazer's really it that does this kind of quality work. You know, and I know there are other ones around the country, but they're going to certainly pay more for shipping. You know, there are, there are more than one company that they can act as, you know, contractor that, you know, you have Lynn Scottson, who they've looked at about, and then the generally, you have a presentation of assets. There are other people that kind of coordinate their activities and do sort of the site preparation work as well.
Erv, I can comment on that. There is also, I believe it's called, where are you, Joel? Modern? Modern Building Systems out of Almsville as well. And that's, it's a very similar company to Blazer, also located in, in Almsville. And regardless of the type of, of, of construction method that we use, we, we would still have to go through a publicly available procurement system in order to acquire that form of construction. But yeah, there's some competition there.
Yeah, that's good.
Which would be in your favor?
Yeah. Well, I mean, just from the public perception, we need to have more than one company, even though I trust Blazer's and they do good work, but for the public, they need to know that we need to get bids from several different companies. Yeah.
Anything else? Any other ideas? What about meeting next week? Is everybody's thoughts on that?
Do we have something to talk about?
Yeah, what do we need to meet for?
Well, it's, it's, it's up to you on your...
We're going to try to wrap this up by August.
Yeah, your target is, is your August regular session for a potential resolution to place something on November ballot. And so I, I'll go whichever direction you, you would, you would like. However, I do have a couple of suggestions. One of them is that I can gather the information around funding within the course of the next week, so I can have that available to you. I'd lean on Bob and, and Mike a little bit to see if they can come up with a projected construction timeline over the course of the next week, so you can review that document. I, I also believe that in, in circumstance like this, similar to what you've done since the last bond election, you've put a lot of time and effort and to allow as much time and meeting opportunity as you can to be on your side. Because you're going to, if you're anything like me, wake up early in the morning, you're going to think of something or remember something, and you're going to talk about that fairly quickly. And so I would encourage you to, as a placeholder, schedule something for next Monday so, so you can have those. So there's at least three items that you can discuss, and maybe it'll only be a 30-minute meeting, but at least you have it available to, to put it out there and have that discussion.
Sure. Well, if we have information, new information to talk about, I think it's worth having a meeting.
Do we know if Julie and David will be back?
I don't know about, I, I don't know. Julie, I believe, will be back.
I think Julie will be back.
She's on vacation. David, I'm, I'm not certain.
It haven't mattered.
Yeah, that would matter. I agree. And we can have Denise follow up next day or two, Owen, and see what, see what's going on with that.
I guess I'd be in favor of a meeting, like you said, even a short meeting. Could be in favor of getting out whatever information to the interested public that we could, you know, be another opportunity. I don't know that we would probably expect very many people, but in some of our meetings we've had about a few, so, you know, maybe. A lot of, a lot of the summer sports are kind of in a hiatus in the time period now, so maybe we'll get...
Well, in my sense, that, that these figures are going to garner some attention. People have been very hungry, the public's been very hungry to see some numbers. So you have some numbers in front of you to, to mull over and to process a little bit. And, and I encourage you to take a look at these documents as well and, and similar to what a couple of you found tonight, some, some numbers that caused you some questions. And, and this is, this is a, a process that I think that the more minds that can be placed on it, the, the better it will be for you and especially for the public to, to be able to define this figure. And while you have some estimated figures in front of you, ultimately, it's going to be your decision to decide what that final figure is that you, you will place on a resolution.
I think if we can get some numbers together on the, you know, the dollars per thousand of a bond and, you know, for every million dollars or whatever, I think it would be worth meeting next week, even if it's just a 30-minute meeting.
Well, that's going to help solidify what approach we're going to do as well.
And then we have our regular work session scheduled for the week after that. They might be two short meetings and we'd have a good idea of what we're going to do when we get to our August regular session then.
Sure.
So why don't we plan on meeting next Monday at 7:00?
Okay.
Okay, so, okay.
One question while we have Bob and Mike here, and maybe I just missed it, but how does the Community Roots or how does that factor into your figures here in your budget? Are they just additional figures as classroom space included or separate portion of the budget entirely yours?
No, it was figured in as part of the overall budget to remodel James Street and Slater Street classrooms, you know, and the exact configuration on how they might use that space is then undefined, but we just put numbers in. Just remodel all space in the Slater campus.
And to have F and E all those spaces?
Yes. I think for some of it, it's a bit more cosmetic, kind of, I don't know, overall, but I don't know what roads are going to be, some might over two months. Yeah, we have, over James Street side, you have some classrooms that have function heating systems, they're just fine. Others do need some, either new units will work. And over on the Slater Street side, you have systems in place that works, it's all fine, but you have to actually place a system unit that'll tie into the main heating system. So there's a lot of varying degrees of work that have to be done.
Okay. Okay, any other thing, anything else for discussion items before we move on to staff reports? Okay, Scott, financials.
In front of you, you have the monthly budget report, and I apologize for not getting this out to you in the board packet. Staff's been pretty busy with the conversion to the new accounting system. And we've actually, as you know, you get two reports mostly for the end of June. So you'll get another one next month, which will have a little tighter figures. These are still, even though we're practically in mid-July, these are still a little, a little loose for the finish of last year. Most of the bills are, are in, but not all of them, and most of the revenue is in. We did make an adjustment to this report just as early as today because we reduced a lot of our accounts payable balance by doing a pretty large check write. On the budget side, first page, you'll notice that we essentially brought in $1.2 million more than we had budgeted. And down at the bottom on the expenditures, we spent $4.9 million less than we had budgeted. So our ending balance, budget balance is $6.2 million, which represents 13% of the budget. So those are broadly kind of mentally where we like to be in the, in the budget side. Second page is the balance sheet. You'll see the checking account, you know, those negative numbers in the checking account, I reiterated this a few times, do not be alarmed by that. They always make my eyes kind of bug out a little bit, but reflects payroll expenses on our summer payroll. It doesn't typically hit our cash until after the end of the payroll period. So nothing to be concerned about there. The bottom lines that you really want to kick, take close eye on is the total net assets, which for mostly for us is, is money that's invested in the local government investment pool where it gets interest every day, as opposed to sitting in our checking account where it gets very little interest. So anyway, our, our net asset picture is as good as is our current liabilities. Those are, those liabilities are typically bills that we have to pay that are charged in the year under record, but we pay in the future. So those are current liabilities, accounts payable. And then the summary by fund, you can see, and remember, the summary by fund is essentially the balance between what has come in on the front page and what has gone out on the front page. So that's the balance. You'll see that in the general fund, we have $2.4 billion left over, and that's roughly seven and a half percent of your general fund balance. Again, number's lower than your scope. Also Fund 430 is, was alluded to earlier, that's, those are some capital projects funds that you have the ability, if you were to start some construction work, that would be where that would come from. Any questions there? Moving on to the next page, which is the general fund expenditure summary. Again, this is on a cash basis. The budgeted amount's not subject to carryover retention. I like to look at that bottom number of the 2.8%. So that's how close we came to spending what we thought we were going to spend. If you recall, we budget predominantly using staffing costs on an averaged basis. So every staff member is averaged out. So those schools that would have higher, more seasoned staff members would, would end up spending more than budgeted, and those with less seasoned staff members, newer staff members would spend less. The fact that this, the very top part of that page is made up about 88% of staffing costs, or the fact that we're about 2.8% budget remaining is pretty much testament to the averaging works. It surprises me, but it, it does work out real well. The budgeted amount's subject to carryover retention. We did have a couple of schools that looked like they overspent that number a bit, so I have not done the research into where those overspends are, but I have a good relationship with all the principals, so I'm sure I'll get a couple of calls tomorrow morning and we will look into where some of those folks overspent. And then finally, the back page is the cash flow summary page. Again, preliminary stuff, for the most part, most of that stuff is in, but we are going to have some more bills that we'll probably hit. But again, our, our cash flow is positive. If you look at the actual June and very bottom there, $2.4 million, that's our cumulative balance of positive cash flow for the year. I wanted to mention too, that our, in addition to transitioning over to visions, which has been a little bit of a, a little bit of a chore, we've been putting a lot, my staff in particular, has been putting a lot of extra hours in this as well. We are looking at RFP for management services for food services. One of the things that we have reported in the January meeting, I think, is that our, our balance sheet was looking like we were maybe, maybe finishing up a little bit less in revenues than expenditures for this year for food services. Well, Andy and I kind of talked about this, and we thought it was prudent to just look and see what kind of management programs are out there in terms of running a food services program. Again, it's mostly management. What is out there now isn't someone coming in and providing all the work. This is something that utilizes our own employees and, and those types of things, but can help us control food costs pretty significantly as well as increased utilization. So we put together a template, the state has a template for folks that are, you know, considering this. It's certainly not an issue that's unique to our district. And, you know, many districts are, are not able to really subsidize our food services program. So the goal is to break even, and so we're going to see if there's some companies out there that are able to do that. The work that we put in to build the RFP is probably going to pay us off even if we do not get anybody that's able to improve our program at all, simply because they'll do some free analysis of our numbers and likely we'll be able to glean some areas of improvement and some indices that, you know, some targets that we can build to, to really work for. So that's what's going on in the finance services area.
Is, is our food services now pretty much decentralized that each school is handling its own food purchasing and...
No, it's happening all, it's in one area.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we have a couple of key vendors for most of our food purchases. And, and on top of all of that, you know, we're, we're also dealing with all the new nutritional standards and the portion size standards. And interestingly enough, now we've also had to deal with what are called the alternative food sources. So vending machines of any type that are available, not just when the food services program is open, but during the school year, needs to maintain certain nutritional standards. So we have worked with a company that's providing some healthy snack options in the, in the high school, so we're doing a pilot run for them to see how, how well they do. But we went out to bid on that and had three vendors that responded and we picked the lowest cost one, and hopefully we'll see how that works out for us.
Okay, questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Any board reports? Correspondence? I don't think we've had too much, have we? Okay. I'd like to open up for a second audience with visitors. Would anyone else like to address John? John, could you please sign in so Denise doesn't get on our case?
First of all, I don't want to take too much time. I just wanted to thank you for your efforts to this point on the, on the bond and on this project. I know it's been a long process, but I know tonight, kind of hearing, for me to hear the, you know, the, starting to come together, I think is kind of a, kind of can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I guess I would just, as an aside, say that before I came from California, we had some great success with the volumetrics process, and it, it's phenomenal. Again, it seems, I guess it's a savings possibly, but the look is great. I mean, it's, it's faster and anyhow, that's just, you know, my experience with that. But I guess I didn't, I don't know if that's for public consumption, the, the drafts you received, but just kind of sensing sort of maybe a little bit of sticker shock from the, sitting in the back there. You know, I guess, you know, my thought on that is you guys have followed a great process here in terms of getting input from the public. You've studied it, you've had a task force, and the cost is going to be kind of what it's going to be. But I don't think you have to apologize for doing something well. You know, so whatever that number ends up being, I mean, I know we always want it to be less than it's, but I, I would say, as you get to the point of rolling this out, you know, you shouldn't have to apologize for what you've done and, and you shouldn't have to apologize for making a great school. I mean, you've, you've looked at, it sounds like they're talking about, you know, utilizing things we can utilize, what the air conditioning, and, and I mean, it's not frivolous, it's not exorbitant, it's kind of what's needed. So, you know, I think the message would be, you know, and it's only going to get more expensive in the future. So I mean, it's not like, well, it's too much, let's not do it. Well, then in two years, it's going to be more. So I don't know, I just, I just think that, you know, it's exciting for me to see this come together. I applaud your efforts and as it comes forward, you know, you've evolved, I mean, another work session, it sounds like. I mean, you guys have put a lot of time in, but when the time comes to kick it off, you know, I don't think there's any regrets about what you're doing. I mean, some people might complain about the cost, but the cost is the cost, and you're going to have a great product when it's done and it's going to serve the kids well. So that's the message I think needs to get home. So thanks for your efforts.
Great, thank you, John.
Thanks, Sean.
That's good advice. Anybody else that you just want to... Anybody else that just want to?
I, too, would like to thank you guys for the work you put in. It shows, and as a parent, I recognize that. One of the things I keep hearing, though, and just want to remind you, and a lot of people have sat up here and reminded you to do, of a lot of things, and that's to keep this clear, concise, and Eugene Field for right now. And so as the discussions are of Robert Frost and the movement, and overall, we've seen public input from, of, you know, to bite off more than we can chew, is certainly something as a consideration as we move forward, especially as we draw so close to a bond. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have one action item tonight. Approve 2014-15 employment contract with our superintendent, Andy Blandow. Is there a motion for approval?
There's a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. Okay, we're going to move out of regular session, go to, into executive session under ORS 192660, consideration of sick leave bank request.